We'd like to welcome everybody out for our regular agenda meeting. And we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. United States of America. And to the republic which stands aloneation of the world in this whole liberty and justice for all.
He was officially called to order. We'll be able to roll call.
Yes.
Commissioner Bueller, Commissioner Day.
Here.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Here.
Commissioner Rube.
Here.
Commissioner Robertson.
Here.
Commissioner Speakup.
Here.
Commissioner Terry.
Okay, for approval minutes, we have both July 7th and the 21st. I have corrections on both and two rather large context orders on the 21st. And I wrote pretty good notes. Is that okay?
Okay. Yep, that'll be fine.
There are calls for any questions. Did any other commissioners have anything they wanted to comment on or ask about?
I have a typo, a couple of typos.
Okay.
Nothing material.
Okay, so if we're good, we'll go ahead and we'll approve the minute for July 7th and July 21st. I'm just going to count it down. Okay, moving on to courtesies and proclamations. There are none. We'll have our board and commission report, beginning with Commissioner Speakup.
Nothing to report?
Commissioner Rube.
Yeah, the city county board of health met on July 28th. And had a pretty good meeting. I have the best part for me, what you truly listen to and meet our sanitary in training, Eva Magnusson. And it was, I think she's going to be doing a good job and adding a lot to what's going on here. And somebody made the comment that she really likes her job. So that speaks for a little longevity there. And we hope that comes into play. The other thing of particular interest was through the Planned Parenthood of Montana is, part of their program is tobacco and prevention, smoking prevention, and of course with vaping. Now, the question was asked on how many, say, high school kids might be doing vaping. And so Danielle Reddish, the person in charge of that, has been, we've been getting emails on that. She's working on that. And when she gets some hard facts, we'll certainly present them to all of you folks. I'm afraid we're not going to like what we hear about that. So we'll see how that turns out. The Fergus County Nurses Office, I'm just going to read some of this instead of just, typically I don't take much time. But anyway, they do a lot of stuff. They provide plan pack for safe sleep program to families with newborns, oral hygiene education and toothbrushes to any kid that comes into the office. And so they gave away 17 of that. Safe sleep education, safe sleep books, bike safety coloring books, and Band-Aids to safe sitter courses offered by the extension office. And they had eight, almost assuming teenagers go through that safe sitter program. And that's always good. They continue to offer lead testing. If you have any questions on is there lead presence or not, go to them and they'll help you out with that. And then immunizations, boy, they do a lot of that. They held five vaccine clinics throughout Fergus County at different schools, businesses, and long-term care facilities in the last three months. Total vaccinations given this quarter, 348, and requests for records, 120. So they, and they did go to, they did four daycare immunization reviews, those kids to make sure that they've had their immunizations. I'm sure there's some state law or federal law somewhere that says they got to have them to be in a daycare. Okay, other things they did, COVID. They had four cases of COVID with one hospitalization. Some things here, I have no idea what they even mean, so I'm going to leave them. Protestsis, 85 or 25, and then animal bites, 13. Get this, eight dogs, two cats, one bat, one muskrat, and one raccoon. We do live in Montana, don't we? They do, I didn't, they do lead checks in people through either their capillaries or their venous. They do a lot of blood pressure checks. People can just walk right in if they're curious and have, they're having issues. They can go in there and have their blood pressure checked. The community lab draws, they've done several of them, six of them. The nurses go out on visits, okay? They've done 17 visits. I'm not sure if that's to homes or to school, but we're getting out of the office and checking on people. Okay, urine drug screening and drug patch programs. There's 10 clients currently and they did 115 drug screens, no drug patches. They have a loan closet where you, if you need orthopedic support, you know, walkers, crutches, wheelchairs, they have 57 clients that have used equipment in the last quarter. They offer free, community-wide lead testing. And upcoming things, of course, they were in the Louis Town Days Parade. And some of them are going to be renewing their various trainings. That would be Heather and Amanda Mosley. A letter from Governor Gianforte. This letter is to notify your local board of health that during the Montana 2025 legislative session, House Bill 888 was passed and enacted into law. The bill revises Montana law to prohibit local boards of health from requiring persons to receive any type of vaccination, medication, supplement, or other type of drug treatment. This change in law is effective July 1, 2025. And so they tell you where you can get a copy of that bill if you want to read the whole thing. That's kind of interesting there. I think that came as the aftermath of COVID when agencies were requiring certain things of people that probably were against privacy laws. So central Montana family planning. Again, a lot of it was from Danielle Reddish. The Montana has expanded the indoor air act, yeah, to include vaping. So you can't vote, wherever tobacco is outlawed or prohibited, so is vaping. So I won't have to read that to you. Big news that for them anyway, they met and exceeded their cancer screening goals for physical year 25. They're anticipating that the physical year 26 funding to be a bit smaller for the chronic disease and health promotion programs. They do have contracts to provide for Fergus County. They got to see how that all shakes down with our current administration in Washington. They will have three Providence, University of Providence student nurses within, with the office, starting July 8th through August 1st, helping with some marketing materials. So I guess that's part of a class work that those students do. And anytime you can give them hands-on experience, that's a good thing, so. Other than that, sanitation reporting. Bedbug complaint at a hotel. Followed up on the complaint on the room filed in the complaint and roomed on either side. I did not find the presence of bedbugs in the rooms. Potential septic sewage from a home outside of city limits. Followed up as the complaint from the state. Upon inspection, found no evidence of that happening. Only a natural spring running under the property, so. A new cesspool thing. She does all the septic tanks and things like that, holding tanks. She has a big job. Anyway, disgusting but interesting. Working with the police and a fire to remedy a situation involving the owner of a home inside city limits. The owner has been hauling five gallon buckets of his own excrement from his house and putting them in the sidewalk and blocking the walk path. I advise the first thing to do is to remove the danger of the pails of excrement. Second, to get this individual back on water or set up in place where he could have a working toilet. The city waste treatment plant was contacted to see if they would have the means to remove the buckets of waste. A long-term solution is still needed, so. And she did 13 inspections in that time. And so she's out in nine septic tank visits and two follow-ups on inspections to make sure they were doing what they were told to do, so. Anyway, and they issued eight more septic permits. That was through BART, so a lot of stuff going on. But it's comforting to know that we have an active sanitaryian. There you go.
Impressive, thank you. Wednesday, Wednesday, okay.
Yep.
Nothing to report.
And no report from the Central Montana Foundation or Park and Rec. Park and Rec will also meet this week, Wednesday. Hopefully there will be a call. All right, we'll move right along to no city manager report tonight. Okay, because of the in-depth information through the budgeting and our update with the public services. Let's do public comment on non-agenda items. Is there any public comment for non-agenda items? You can hear that now.
Explain the process.
So yeah, you can introduce yourself, your name and address for the record. Feel free to step forward.
My name is Chris Almond. And as you guys have heard a lot with the Republican services, I just wanted to address that.
If you'll come up and use the microphone, I'd appreciate it so they can hear us, hear you, thank you.
Like, if you guys were.
Thank you. We can share.
Who's Chris Almond?
Almond, it's a weird one, but I take no offense to Mr. A A M O L V.
Don't know yet.
It sounds like you guys have also been struggling to find some information out about this. And I only found out information after spending about two or three days on the phone and pursuing dead end after dead end. Sorry, I'll hand these out and get that away.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
This number is also in that packet. Anyway, I just wanted to talk and say that the Public Services Commission. The Public Services Commission, a gal named Katie there, has told me that as Louis Town and individuals call her, she cannot do anything on an individual basis because of how it is with the individual contract. She says that the way that some of the cities in Louis Town are fighting that are through like a garbage can ordinance or making sure to have a contract that is run through the city that makes them party in that contract. Anyway, sorry, through that public speaking here. But I worried about a lot of the specific hazards that you guys have already brought up and mentioned as far as issues with the vehicles moving slower. There's going to be emergency service routes. There will be EMS competing with road space or, or competing for road space with the garbage trucks. And I guess you guys can see several of those on your own too. I guess my biggest thing here is I just wanted to bring this information to you because I had difficulty finding all this information. And so I wanted to, as you guys are representatives, make sure that you had all the information that I have been looking for. Because I think that the only way that we'll get any of this to mean anything is for our community to be in lockstep and not be going on an individual basis trying to challenge these guys. The more we're on an individual basis, the more opportunity there is for retaliation against us. You know, there's nowhere else to take our garbage for hundreds of miles. And like you guys have said, it's an environmental thing. There's nobody who can open up something and compete because that transfer station belongs to that company. And so we are effectively as a community going to need to fight it as a monopoly. And so the only way we're going to be able to do that is having everybody be on the same terms. I realize that that might be an issue with everybody because the city's obviously got to pay for it somehow. But if it's put in front of the citizens, I think that if there's overwhelming support for it here in town, the citizens would pass, you know, having those extra costs brought to them for whatever contract or whoever's needed to negotiate that. But I think that if we all go and try to fight this on our own, we're all going to come up losing and we'll all hit the same dead ends that I hit. But as a city, if they have to negotiate for all of our, you know, the contract for all of us at one time, it will be much more impactful to lose all of us as a customer than it will be to lose just one of us. And so they would lose their ability to punish us for speaking up for arbitrary rules like where we can and cannot put our garbage cans. What, you know, they basically will dictate what our yards look like. You guys have mentioned the right of ways. I recently had to get a variance for building fence there, let alone, you know, have all the garbage cans out there. And I do worry about if something does happen to somebody's property, if their cars are parked, they say they only need a two-foot slot in between. If they miss that two-foot slot, who pays the bills? And will they be able to be held accountable for that damage? Or will they just drive off because otherwise we'll have to invest a campus? And so I really think that it puts us at a disadvantage as citizens. And I think that they've had more of an adverse effect on all of the town than any other independent person or company. And so I guess that's my point. So thanks for listening.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your comment. Any other public comment on non-agenda items? Any comment? Welcome, please give us your name and address.
Yes, my name is Steve Phillips, 15 West Devlin, here in City of West Devlin. Thank you, Chris, for your nice job of putting the packet together and all the, and I strongly agree with everything that he's said. The only thing that I would add to that is even when they were picking up the garbage, they said we had to have our garbage cans two feet away from any structure or vehicle. And even at that, the two feet, they refused to pick it up at the entrance. They're making a judgment call as they're going. And I understand, well, I'm damaging my building anyway. But at the same time, I have no control on how most of my neighbors park my garbage can. And I can't be out there, please, the garbage can't move in connection with how my neighbors park. In the summertime, we get a lot of campers sitting on the street, prepared for camping and those kinds of things. And parking's a premium. I have a parking back at my house, which helps, but we just have a lot of parks on the street. I really thank Hobbie for the article in the newspaper, helping some things up. But I agree with Chris that we have to stand together if we're going to do something.
Thank you so much.
Yep, thanks.
Hi, I'm Brian McNary of the 810 West Devlin. I guess a couple of questions for the city. Are you guys trying to push back at all on this? Has there been a conversation with anybody from Republic about what's driving it? And if there's a compromise?
They have no conversation with us ahead of making this decision.
Question number two would be, is there a COVID violation here? I can't leave my car parked in the street for too long without getting a ticket. But now I have to reserve a parking spot in my trash can. You see what I'm saying?
Yes, there would be issues with encroachment, things in the public right of way for an extended period of time, things like that, yes. And that will come back on the individuals, not.
It is or is not a COVID violation, I'm just confused.
It could be if you left it out there for a long time or would want to build a structure to make it not a blip here on the long side of.
Yeah, it's a whole bunch of gigantic reasons, so.
Thank you so much.
I'm Melvin Twerman. I live up on Evelyn Street. I'm 86 years old and I can't drag that thing in and out around. So mine has to sit out in the street. And like I, I went out and I talked to them at the garbage thing and they said, well, you put it out there between the cars. Well, how do you tell people on the street, you can't park there, I got to have this room? Because they said, I got to have this much room to set my garbage. And it's impossible. They have the right park wherever the hell they feel like parking. And I just really think there ought to be some way that you could force them to use the alleys that they used forever and a day, never had trouble. And like our alley, which we're fortunate, a guy that lives up on it, he plows snow. So our alley is always clear. When, when we had that big storm and nobody could get down the street, they could drive down to our alley. And they did. The garbage man picked ours up. We were fortunate. But now he's going to have to try to figure out how to pick it up off of the street. And I'm going to have to try to figure out to have it on the street. And I don't know how I'm going to do it. So I really think you ought to put pressure on them to use the alleys that they're designed for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I'm Phil Steele. I live in the same vicinity as these people do, who have got the same problems. The alley's been used forever, ever, and it works great. We try to keep, we cleaned the alley out last, last year, they get up halfway up the alley and they empty their garbage just like, just like normal. I just can't imagine how this is going to be nothing but chaos. So I'm just kind of echoing what everybody else said, but it's just crazy to me.
Any other public comment? Yes, you go ahead.
I gave these out and I might not have explained the significance of it, but going along with just the whole, we all have to be together in it. This is the Montana government and they have already told me that they have claimed open for us, for the city of Louis Town. And that all we need right now is for people to call in because they can't do anything for one person. And so if you have a bunch of complaints that you can't handle as far as having answers to because you can't get the answers, there are the people to send them to. These are the people looking out for the public and who can interfere with it. Republic Services is somebody who does fall correctly under their purview. And Big Timber is already fighting with them for very similar issues. And so if there's somebody who needs answers that you don't have and they're upset or just the impact of what's going on, they need to call this number and explain what the impact is. And once they, you know, once we get enough people to, they will be held accountable. And so, but if we're silent, then we won't see results.
Do those guys have that phone number?
They sure do.
Okay, good deal.
I'll give it to anybody who wants it and post it on every poll by the diocese.
Thanks to this guy at the end right here.
Yeah, make sure the guy on the end has it.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Can I just come up?
Yeah, no, I was just going to invite the commission to make any comments or questions.
I would just make sure that you all understand, we feel the same way. We've heard it a lot and our hands are a bit tied, more than a bit, extremely tied because it's a public utility. Be no different than trying to fight western energy. And so we have had every meeting for the last four weeks or four meetings, two months, discussed this topic and tried to work towards some kind of resolution. So it's not, no one's sitting on their hands. It's more a matter of what can we do?
Well, it's a picnic trying to watch them garbage trucks get up and down them, our main streets. And the, I feel sorry for the drivers because instead of just going down the alley and come back, now they're trying to go down the street and down the avenue and get that big thing turned around so they can go the other side of the, and it's a mess.
We're seeing the same thing. We just, we have, we are very limited in what we can and can't do with a public concession like that.
Can I ask what happens to you guys that have been put in for it?
Trying to find out what legal right we have to do anything. That's the problem.
Is there anything between the county commission and city commission upstate? Is there anything?
That's what Hobbie's going to work on.
Yep.
Try to find an avenue to do something. There aren't, you would just explain.
Again, I know that Fergus County is looking at some options as far as landfill and different things like that. But again, encouraging entrepreneurs to look at garbage collection. But we do have to recognize that we don't have a contract in place or the rights to regulate how they're operating their private business. And so we also, I mean, the commission could pass an ordinance that said no garbage cans on the public right of way. How they interpret that, we wouldn't know until after the fact. I mean, they could say, okay, we're pulling out of your community and that would leave an entire community without our service too, or things like that. And so some well-intended plans could not end up with the results we were hoping for as well.
If I understand the driving factor is, is the state of the alleys, vegetation growing and stuff like that?
That's new. It's my first today. The customer was told today, but there has been no communication with the public service regarding, it was driver safety is what their kind of previous comments were all centered around.
I would say define that a little better.
Would they be willing to have a representative come talk to us if they can truly ask?
You have another question.
Our next would be, yeah.
Sorry. I just wanted to let you guys know that if they, you get them to talk in with them and they tell you that there's nowhere else to go, there is a company, Grizzly Republic in Zula, has actually accused them of creating a monopoly where they go and, because in Zula, they pay less cost than what we do for their services. And those costs are then pushed onto us. If we were to go and lose those services, I'm sure that there would be somebody like Grizzly Republic that would want to come and fill that void who has an operating business in Montana and has been oppressed by that monopolistic agenda.
But is the landfill, now is that, no, it's our landfill, right?
No, it's privately owned, yeah. And it goes up like right of way.
Yeah, they take it.
The hall is grateful.
Yeah, they dump, well, of course, what we do is, is we started taking. What we do is, is we started taking our own trash up there.
Where?
Up to...
The trash park.
No, to, to the public service.
Same with the trash.
Then they'd load twenty dollars to them.
Yep.
Well, that like, turn out that, that keeps the disadvantage to people who can't really make those rolls around. They're in the same hole with loading that garbage up and taking it out of the truck. They face the same challenges if not more.
I would recommend that we get on Montana talks and, um...
The other one? Okay, is there any other public comment regarding the non-agenda items? We thank you so much for coming and commenting tonight and bringing forth a lot of the good education on this. Okay, we're moving on to the consent agenda. It's the acknowledging of claims that have been paid from July eighteen to, July thirty-first. Is there anybody who would like to question, ask questions regarding?
I have no question.
No question? I didn't need a...
I did on page nine, but I think I figured it out. Page nine, five-seven, five-two-two.
Yep.
Um, but like I say, I think I figured it out.
So that's in demand services, some of it for the water project, some for wastewater. Um, they do review, um...
The biosolids are...
Standing. So the biosolid is the reports that PESHA prepared as well as the documents you'll, we'll discuss later tonight. And so, that's the cost that has been associated. So thirty-five thousand and change to that effort to date.
Okay, is there a motion for the consent agenda or any other questions?
Will we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Speaker and a second from Commissioner Roots. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor of approving the agenda, raise your right hand. Okay, agenda has been approved. Moving on to our regular agenda. Item number one is discussion and action on approving the purchase of a skid steer for the wastewater treatment plant. City manager, Holly Phelps.
Um, so the skid steer at the wastewater plant, um, is no longer. Um, it is, uh, down and out. And they've often just received hand-me-downs from the street department. Uh, they use a skid steer primarily to move large coats. And so they're looking for a smaller unit. Uh, but they do also get into the drying beds and do other activities like that. And so they received a couple of quotes. Um, one for a previous year model, one for a current year model of a John Deere, and then one that's a case.
I, um, I'm not an expert at this, but I've had a little more experience than most people reviewing these. I have a concern with the apparent low number in that the things I look for in this day and age are air conditioning and heating because of contaminants. Because silica is a big issue in any kind of poor environment. And I also look at for, it's called high flow, which allows the use of more type of kinds of attachments because it's a higher volume, pressure, flow of hydraulics. And when I look at the low bid, I do not see either heating, air conditioning, or high flow. And when I look at the second bid, which is sixty-six thousand John Deere RDO, I see high flow and cap heat. Uh, one of the, one of the options is cap with heating, air conditioning, power, and high flow. And so I am concerned that, I also look at the model year. And to have a two thousand twenty-four model year still up around is a bit odd which means it's probably a hot duck, lame duck of some type. And I'm a little concerned that they did extend the warranty I see, but, um, I think it's probably because it doesn't have a cap with heat, air conditioning, and high flow. Now, um, I asked Holly about this, would there be a reason? And she felt they needed a smaller unit to get inside the building, although these are both the same model. They're both John Deere three-twenty-four Gs. Um, and so I suspect the big difference in price is exactly what I'm talking about, which is heat, air conditioning, and high flow. And I, I just worry if you don't have the enclosure on the cab anymore. Um, I know a lot of our equipment, when I was in business, we had to change out because of the regulations we could, related to employee exposure. So I, I'm, I, I applaud the staff for coming up with a less expensive solution. And if that's what they have to have for some reason, I think that would be good. But I would prefer, and I put it in the form of a motion, if you want to discuss it, you can argue, or we can, motion can fail, but I would make a motion to approve the intermediate bid of sixty-six thousand, I think it's two-fifty now. For that model because it has the high flow and the air conditioning heat. Motion. No, we can discuss it. If it gets seconded.
If it gets seconded, do we have a second?
I do.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Robertson and a second from Commissioner Hewitt. What, does like Eddie have any say or opinion or feeling towards, like he's requesting this?
Um, Bernie's the one that specked it out, but again, I think he was looking for the cheapest alternative and not necessarily what would be the best all-around piece of equipment.
He, he was looking for whatever lowest...
Economies.
Okay.
If it would physically work, I would go with the more expensive one because of the heat, air conditioning. Maybe you leave it up to them if they really don't want it for some reason. And I don't know what that would be. Ease of getting in and out because once you have the cab, you have the door. But if they're moving bio-solids with this unit, I would think they would want an enclosure.
Yeah.
And it appears that that's not there.
Is such a purchase then available for other departments to use?
Yes.
For example, to move snow?
Yep, we utilize our equipment in various departments. And they would use this to move snow on the way through.
My mother would do this. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Got that one figured out, yeah.
Is this supposed to be like, drain on the budget?
No.
No, because of the increase here? Okay, well, we have a motion from Commissioner Robertson and a second from Commissioner Hewitt. Is there any other questions? Or comments from the public?
Just in general, but it seems, it's not public, but it makes sense to, uh, spend a little bit more on the right equipment than spend a lot on something that's not gonna do what we want it to do for the long term.
Agreed. Awesome, let's do a roll call vote.
We have an emotion, uh, no, an emotion, a motion to a, to approve a skid steer in the amount of sixty-six thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars from J.B. John Deere slash RDO. Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Roots?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Speaker?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, item number two is discussion and action on approving the repair for the back truck in the sewer department. City manager, Holly Phelps.
Yes, um, so the sewer back truck is one of the biggest pieces of equipment we have at this sewer department. Um, and get a ton of use doing maintenance online. Um, we purchased it several years ago and, uh, have taken it to break falls to get serviced. Really nothing wrong with it, just kind of preventative maintenance. Um, you can see the quote from Poise. Poise is the vendor, the statewide vendor. And so it is proprietary. And, uh, the bid is over the amount, or the estimate is over the amount. And again, this is a worst-case scenario, but wanted to bring it to you guys for approval.
And might the order totals count on mine? Is that fifteen, two...
Four, six, seven, three? Two, six, three, one, I think. I have fifteen, three, one, six, seven, one?
That'd be it.
That's right.
Yep.
That's gonna be a lot of things.
I move to approve the repair of that truck as...
Sorry.
Fifteen, three, sixteen, seven, one.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Robertson to repair the back truck and a second from Commissioner Robertson. Any other comments or questions?
Okay, now hold on. You made the motion.
I made the motion, Mr. I made.
He made the second. Sorry, I heard it backwards.
Thank you. With no comments, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote?
I have one comment.
Oh, good, okay, yeah.
This is the handiest piece of equipment that they have in the public.
Yes, we use it for sewer, or water digs. Uh, we do also work with the small communities around us and do some work for them. And they get into it by as well. And so it is a piece of equipment we utilize weekly for shit.
And if you're not familiar with it, it's a machine that shoots a jet of water down into a, create a hole. And that has a vacuum that sucks out all of the debris that it's moved with the vac, with the water pressure. And so in the old days, you would dig or you would hand dig with a shovel to find the utility or something. And now you just use water. And two people operate it. And it's very efficient and it's much safer to work on issues. And it doesn't destroy the utilities. So it's a great piece of equipment we should, the Republican Works Department should have one or more.
We have a, we kept our old one.
Thank you, Commissioner Robertson. Get you on machinery. Something, okay.
We'll do a roll call vote. Yep, and we are per, no, we're not purchasing this sort of thing. We are repairing the back truck in the sewer department with the, an estimate of fifteen thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-one cents. Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Roots?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Speaker?
Aye. Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, how much does anyone call it?
I think when we bought it, which was ten years ago probably, it was a quarter of a million dollars.
All righty. Item number three, discussion and action on approving the proposal for storm water improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. City manager, Holly Phelps.
Um, so what you have in front of you is a change order to the existing project at the wastewater plant. Uh, Dick Anderson is the contractor. And so they were willing to provide, um, basically an estimate for these improvements. And the improvements include, um, a trench drain in the biosolids field and a improved, um, berm outlet incentive line.
And these coordinate with all the options that we were looking at earlier? Or is this just a flat-out, this is what needs to be done per what was engineered?
Yes, this has to be done. It's kind of a check some balance with the, uh, DQ and kind of that progress, um, over time. And so that includes also installing the berm and a few things like that. But these are kind of necessary steps, yeah.
This doesn't address then the biosolids?
Uh, this is not specific to which, um, basically out or path forward we chose.
Questions or motions for the proposal for this storm water improvement?
I may approve the proposal for storm water improvements.
Second, I approve, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Speaker and a second from Commissioner Roots. Any other additional comments or questions from the commission? Or the public? Yeah.
Commissioner Cox of the Watershed Committee. I just had a question about, uh, the liner for the berms that was included in one of the RPA reports that was suggested for, uh, for the biosolids. It, it isn't mentioned in the...
That is not part of this project, no. Uh, so the commission has not made any direction as to what method of disposal they will end up going with as far as biosolids. They were presented many options here a month ago or so. And so, uh, this is just containment, this is a temporary. So containment and a trench drain and that storm inlet. Step one.
Step one, which is what everybody's been asking for, perfectly. Okay, any other questions? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
We're approving the proposal for storm water improvements of the wastewater treatment plant. Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Roots?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Speaker?
Aye.
All right, item number four is our last one on the agenda. Discussion and action on approving resolution number four-one-nine-six. A resolution stating the intention of the city commission to amend the twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-five budget of the city of Lewistown. City manager, Holly Phelps.
So in front of you, you have the intent to amend the previous budget um, for unanticipated expenses. Uh, those being primarily donations and grant-type revenues that then subsequently had expenditures associated with them. Um, and just some various cleanup, um, you know, canine we no longer have. So absorbing that into our direct forfeiture and things like that. So just some cleanup. Uh, if approved tonight, if he, uh, we'll get that advertised and we'll have a public hearing the next week with more detail to come.
I may approve resolution forty-one-nine-six.
Awesome. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Speaker and a second from Commissioner Hewitt. Um, any other questions regarding this amendment? Intention? Okay, nothing from the commission, nothing from the public. We'll go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Okay, we're approving resolution number four-one-nine-six. Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Roots?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Speaker?
Aye.
Okay, citizen request. Do we have any citizen requests? Okay. Move on to commissioners' minute and we'll start on, I can't remember, we started last time. Do I, do you know?
You did start with me, yes, I had that in.
Yes, okay, I did start with you, we'll start with him again.
Okay, um, I still think I have anything today.
Awesome, thank you. Commissioner Roots?
Well, just, uh, same, same stuff about campers being parked on city streets all summer. Um, I, I just, uh, wish they weren't, so...
And hooked up to electric and, yeah.
Oh, yeah, hooked up to electric.
They are hooked up, they're living in them.
They're, they're there for the long haul.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hewitt? Yep? Anything? Commissioner Robertson?
No, I just would ask for clarification. We do have a, some code change that would address the city campers on city streets.
Um, our changes to our parking unit may affect that, yeah.
I have nothing else.
Thank you. Okay, and then I just wanted to comment, would it be helpful, like, I would appreciate talking to the city attorney just as far as some of the action or what we can do regarding all the public comment that was made tonight with Republic Service. Um, I know we're working on the ordinance for dogs and the, you know, working, the snow has been, it's, you know...
Well, it may be appropriate if there's a few of you commissioners that want to be part of a task force or, uh, you know, a group working on the garbage and the collection of it street-side now. Um, we could definitely give a few meetings together.
That'd be good. I'd be interested to see what our city attorney has to say regarding like how a new ordinance would affect things or what we could go forward with, just to start to get...
I'd get to be with him a little bit, but I think it would be good to get together as a group and kind of bounce some ideas.
Okay, um, do we wanna, is there anyone interested in looking at doing a subcommittee for that? For Commissioner Hewitt?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? I can check in with... I can check in with Commissioner Bueller as well, and see if she has interest in that.
Are you also a lot of her yourself?
Well, I'm not right now. You know, we were approached about two years ago to move our camp to the street. We had, we have like a cul-de-sac alley, and there's three of us on it, and they were having a hard time, and we did that about two years ago, so we've not, we're not affected by this change, but I'm definitely concerned for all the citizens who are affected by it, and seeing what we can do, and, you know, we do live in a beautiful town, and I hate to feel like people are stuck with no options, or that there's a monopoly here, or what have you. So I would be willing, I'm already on the committee with the parking, and the campers, and the dogs, which I actually visited with our vet again this morning, and she, with dogs at large, and bites, and things in our community, so we can throw it in the pot. I'm happy to meet with, be training for that. And then, so that's two of us, Commissioner Hewitt, myself, Rob, any interest?
Let me know when the meetings are.
Okay. All righty, and that's.
Before you drink, I would like to reclaim my minute.
Yes, you may have your minute back.
And I just had a, I just lost it. Hold on, we were talking about.
Dogs.
Dogs, that was it. I was, as a member of this group and at the airport, I did meet with, I'm going to forget her name.
Peggy Butler.
Peggy Butler, Peggy Butler, I just couldn't bring that up, sooner or later. I met with Peggy, and we did identify a piece of property at the airport. She's very interested in leasing, and, and working fast-track to get a, an animal shelter established at the airport. And she's in planning, early planning phase, but we did identify a piece of property.
But who's going to maintain it?
They would, that organization then would maintain it. It would not be a city or a public facility, it would be a private facility.
I mean, they've been in the money for years.
They need the property, and that would be revenue.
They have adequate funding to build the facility in place.
And your zoning would allow us to airport zoning and stuff.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, and it's, it's not a large, it's not an exceptionally large piece of property. It was, is unused at this point, it doesn't have any, someone looking at it.
That's great.
It's very good. Sorry.
No, that's what we want to hear. Because that was in our minutes, the two minutes ago, just that Hewitt was kind of started and issued that, but that time there was no.
She was very excited, I had to talk to her, we could have.
And then Holly, would you be able to coordinate that regarding public services?
Yep, always, I am at the town, or in the week, or fourth and fifth week, so.
So nothing last week.
You've got a little bit of room left on your plate, do you?
Well, it is to be able to get the ball really rolling, to see what options we have, and we can be more proactive and reactive with the situation. Okay, anything else for the good of the order? Yeah, sure.
I guess I'd like to address the potential task force for the public services. I'd encourage you to look at ordinance, we talked about the garbage can placement and right-of-ways, and whether or not that affected ordinance on no business created intentionally or unintentionally increased hazards or obstacles to or for city EMS services is also a good way to look at that, because they will be having to avoid these garbage trucks on their emergency routes. My class statement would like to say, I don't think it's right to appease an aggressor, they need to be held, or met head-to-head, to be held accountable. The state of Montana EPA, I really think they'd rather approve a variance for us for a landfill than they would to have a whole town throwing our garbage billioningly everywhere. But the state officials, they are the ones who will protect a whole town from predatory practices, and the Public Service Commission is somebody who can lobby fines against them when they do enter into those predatory practices against us.
May I make a clarification for you? This task force, and it will be public meetings, that you should make sure.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
Because it's a working meeting, where you can sit, and we, commissioners can sit, we have to be careful to have a forum, but we, is there anywhere that I should look at?
Chris, if you leave your phone number, we can make sure to reach out to you.
And I'll get your, your notes. All righty, any other comments for the good of the order? Go one? One, five? Bernie needs to turn. Thank you, everybody.